Okay, well, come to order. Today is the Wednesday, March 16, 2011, regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission. Could we have roll call, please?
Commissioner, again.
Here.
Commissioner.
Here.
Hi.
Commissioner Yussayyan.
Here. Report regarding posting of agenda.
Agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, March 9, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and posted on the city's website.
All right. Would everyone please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Something just shifted there. Ow! Approval of minutes? Any comments or corrections to the February 16, 2011 minutes?
I move that we accept the minutes from February 16.
I'll second.
Motion support. Roll, please.
I.
Epstein.
Hi.
Hi. On a vote of three to zero with one abstention, the minutes have been approved. Oral communications, I don't believe I have any cards on that. And we'll move on to Agenda Item 6A, the new business standards and setback variance case PCUP 2010-014. It's at 1017 Cumberland Road. And I understand that staff wants us to continue this until May 4, 2011?
Yeah, that's right. The applicant was unable to make the meeting today, and then the hearing officer will be -- is unable to make the following meeting, so then they're requesting that it be continued to May 4.
Any comments from commissioners?
No.
Motion, please.
I move that item, standards and setbacks variance case number PCUP 2010-014 be continued to May 4?
May 4, 2011.
2011.
Second.
Motion support. Roll, please.
I.
I. I.
On a vote of four to zero, standards and setback variance case PCUP 2010-014 has been continued to May 4, 2011 without further notice. That was part of the motion?
It was part of the motion.
All right. I was reading, so I didn't really note that. Okay. We'll move on to old business, its variance case PVAR 2010-002. This was continued from February 16, 2011. This is an appeal from the decision of the planning hearing officer. The matter is heard as a de novo hearing. Testimony given at the planning hearing officer's hearing should be repeated because the commission does not review the tapes of those meetings. Decisions rendered today will be based on the evidence presented at this hearing and the evidence in the file, including appeal documents, staff reports, and letters received. Individuals speaking today should therefore present all the evidence which they may wish the commission to consider. A handout describing the appeals process is available at the front counter. Appeal items are considered as public hearings. The commission will consider testimony from the appellant, applicant, staff, and any member of the public wishing to speak. If you wish to speak, please fill out a card and present it to the recording secretary. The subject case is located at 1304 Carmen Drive. I believe the property identification is 5649-029-013. The appellant applicant is Gustavo Vichi, which I'm sure I've mispronounced the name, as is my habit. The proposal is an appeal to the planning hearing officer's denial of a variance application to add 1,397 square feet of floor area to an existing one-story, single-family house while not providing the required five-foot interior setback and exceeding the maximum allowed 40 percent floor area ratio. The variance is required because the addition is proposed in the recess on the first floor to align with the existing three-foot, eight-inch interior setback along the north side of the property and proposing for -- and is proposing a 47 percent floor area ratio in the R12 low-density residential floor area ratio District 2 zone, described as Lot 35 Bellhurst Hill Slopes tract. The staff recommendation is that we sustain the hearing officer's decision to deny the variance requests. Could we have an overview, Ms. Toledo?
But I believe Tim Foy wanted to mention this first.
I believe we have the owner present, the property owner here. Yeah, the applicant slash appellant seems not to be here. We just tried contacting them at the -- I guess they're in the parking structure on the way.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I just found out that the applicant is here at City Hall and is making his way to the hearing room.
All right. May we go into recess for a couple minutes?
Or you may take the other item first, if you'd like.
No, we'll wait for two or three minutes. We'll go into recess until they come into the room.
Did you bike?
Did you what?
Did you bicycle?
Did I bike?
Yeah.
I wish. I would've been here three hours later. Yeah, maybe I still have it outside. Well, I wouldn't even know where to put my bike if I brought it here. Oh, is there a last one? Try it next time. Nellie, you guys want to still sit next to me?
Prevailing wind from the...
I'll be right back.
What is it? Six dollars.
Really?
Yeah.
Nice.
From Korea.
There we go.
I had a mic on.
We're hard enough to turn off my mic. I've got to watch the replay of this now. Okay. We're back in session. This is a continuation of the March 16 regular meeting in the Planning Commission. Since we went into recess, we had introduced variance case PVAR 2010-002. And just before we went into recess, Commissioner Yussayyan joined us. So with that said, let's get a little bit more of an overview, Ms. Toledo.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. As you stated, the property is located at 1304 Carmen Drive. It is located on the east side, just north of Mountain Street. The lot size is 5,625 square feet. Is currently developed with a one-story, 1,375-square-foot, single-family house and a 357-square-foot detached garage. It is located in the R1 Zone, low-density residential, and the surrounding uses consist of single-family residential homes. As stated, the applicant is requesting a variance to add 1,397 square feet to the existing house while not providing the required five-foot interior setback and exceeding the maximum allowed 40 percent floor area ratio. The variance is required because the addition is proposed, as you stated, along the north side. There's an existing recess on the first floor, and in that area, they are proposing the addition to be located to align with the existing three-foot, eight-inch interior setback. And they are proposing the FAR to be 40, .47 or 47 percent. The planning hearing officer, as you stated, denied the applicant's request, and staff is also sustaining the planning hearing officer's decision to deny the request. And that's why we're here today, because the appellant appealed the planning hearing officer's decision. That's a brief overview. If there's any questions, I'm available to answer it this time.
Any questions from the commission at this time?
Just a clarification question. In the chronology here, you had asked the applicant to submit drawings over and over. The drawing that we have now, does that reflect the information that you requested?
No. No, the drawings before you are essentially the same drawings that were presented at the planning hearing officer's hearing. The reason why we requested additional information is because we want to verify if more than 50 percent of the combined exterior walls and roof are being removed, because if that's the case, then the required interior setback would be, for new construction, six feet. So we would have to properly notice it, properly state in a public notice that it's a brand-new house.
Right. Okay, so as far as we know, the drawings we have, and to your knowledge, that we were not able to verify, this was over 50 percent?
Not completely. What I actually also pinned up on the board, the lower middle panel, that's the most recent calculation, but it did not provide all the information. Because in order to determine that calculation, we need to find -- we need to know the length and height of each wall that's being removed, and they did not provide that information. They basically provided some information regarding the roof area, some of the demolition for the walls, but not the lengths and heights, because, again, we need that information in order to assess it correctly. But I believe that one was submitted September 29, and that's the only calculation.
Yes, because the drawing that I saw, I was at the site, I was reviewing the existing house versus a drawing, and some of the indication of that drawing that says existing wall is not existing wall, it's a new wall. And so there were some errors in the drawing, so that's why I was asking that question. And also, one more question is that your -- the applicant is submitting letters of support as a new evidence. Is there anything else other than the letters that they're submitting as a new evidence?
On behalf of the applicant, or the applicant's representative, or the appellant, rather, I have not received additional information.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for staff at this moment? All right, we'll allow the appellant's representative to come forward and present their case. You have up to 15 minutes, sir.
Hello, my name is Armin Shamsarian with AMAC Group, representing Mr. Vichi, 639 West Broadway, Glendale, California, 91204. Basically, really, I indicated about the project, my client is requesting roughly about 1,400 square feet of floor area addition and maintaining existing three-foot, eight-inch setback with the 47 percent roughly proposed floor area ratio. Let me tell you about the history of this project. Originally, we started with the project with more than 52 percent of floor area out there. And we had a meeting with Mrs. Toledo and Stephanie from the design review, and they indicated to us to reduce the floor area down. We did that. It came up to roughly about 47 percent. And in conjunction with that, we submitted the calculation as far as justifying the existing demolition, which indicates clearly how many percent of this project is being maintained and how many percent is being demolished. As far as the calculation, as far as the height, the areas were indicated on the plan, the height is shown on the elevation. So basically, in our calculation, it justifies the square footages. I do not understand what part of the thing was missing, because you have clearly the elevation indicating the height, and you have clearly the wall that we are maintaining. So if they want to calculate, they could justify just multiply them, which comes up with the exact calculation indicated on that. But if you wish to have that, I can provide you with this chart which indicates as far as area calculations. And that was, I think, submitted for this application. In conjunction with that, I requested the extension of this project so I could have a meeting with the homeowner association regarding this project and get a feedback from them as far as the project. So we had a March 6 meeting with the HOA Homeowners Association regarding this project, and the board members and the neighbors, everybody attended to this meeting, and they had no concern as far as the floor area, they had no concerns as far as the setback. The only concern that they had was they want us to maintain a Spanish-style house rather than this type of a style. I do have -- Mrs. Toledo should have submitted that letter from them, from the homeowners association, to you regarding this.
They have it.
And then I had one opposition letter from Ronnie Sanders indicating, I read it for you, "Please be advised that I am against any and all the requests of variance to the proposed renovation expansion at 1304 Carmen Drive. I was invited and attended to the meeting Sunday, March 6, 2011, at the residence. A representative of AMAC and the members of the Rossmoyn Mountain HOA officers and board of directors presented the project and conducted the meeting. Try as they may, the HOA could not hide their bias in favor of the project. Specific questions were asked, and answers were mere representation of the truth or, at the minimum, deceptive. Whether it conducted the variance request or the eventual design of the home should the request be granted, this become clear when a document generated by the city of Glendale was forwarded to me the next day." This was this honest meeting. Just the purpose of this letter for me, just to indicate to you that, as I indicated, we had a meeting with the HOA, and they had no concern as far as the floor area and as far as the setback. The only thing they requested us was to modify the design of the building to meet, to have a Spanish-style design. In conjunction with that, I had...
I'm sorry, do you have something in writing from them that indicates that?
Yeah.
You have, yeah, you have that.
You have that?
That's not the way I read it, so...
I read it.
All right. So that's the document you're referring to. You don't have anything else?
No.
I mean...
Yeah.
We have this one.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure you're talking about the same document I was looking at.
There was another document I submitted to you. And in conjunction with that, I have...
Just a different format. Got it. Thank you.
I have this document signed by 1112 neighbors that are favored on this project. I don't know if you do have that one in your file or not.
Let me see that.
Yeah, I was trying to compare. Oh, that's what I wanted to do.
None of us have seen this before.
Same, is it?
No, it's just kind of interesting to compare. All right, please continue. I just want to make sure it wasn't the same.
So what we've done, as far as this project, is we talked to the neighbors, we represented the project, we went over the project with them, and we asked if they have any comments or anything about this project. And if they have comments, if the homeowners association has any comments about the project, we would like to implement it on the project and try to meet what the neighbors' concern or the HOA's concerns are. So the only concern, as I indicated, was mainly the design of the project, that Spanish, they would like to have some sort of a Spanish-style design on the project. That's basically the project. If you have any questions or comments, I would like...
Questions for the speaker at this time?
Yes.
Cheats, any questions?
None at this time.
All right, we have none at this time. You will have a rebuttal period shortly. We have a number of speaker cards. Everybody will get three minutes. First card I have, and I'm always going to blame your penmanship, it's not my pronunciation. It's Carrie...
I just want to...
Well, I don't know what yielding time. You've got three minutes, she can have three minutes. You know, I'm not going to start combining cards and giving, you know, one person six minutes, that's...
No, I'm going to speak on her behalf.
That would be fine. That would be great.
Mr. Chair, excuse me, if we could make a copy of the newly submitted materials for the homeowners, just for the public to see?
Sure, just a moment. Before you begin, ma'am, let's catch up.
Yes.
Do they need that?
Apparently, it's newly submitted.
Okay.
All right. Please identify yourself.
My name is Carol Welling, resident of the city. Live on 857 East Mountain. And I'm speaking on behalf of the homeowners that are contiguous to this proposal. First, let me say that the homeowner support the city in their denial of the variance. Some of the things that this particular homeowner is concerned about is the echo noise factor. I think some of you have been out to this, where you think the house on Mountain, which they live on, on East Mountain, there's almost like an echo chamber there, because there's not much of a setback, and of course, there'll be less of a setback if this is allowed. And also, for the contiguous neighbors, there's an issue of privacy, looking down on everybody's backyards. That should be taken into consideration. Also, the last speaker unfortunately gave a lot of misinformation about how the homeowners feel about it and the homeowners association feels about this particular project. I am a founding member of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association, and I'm vehemently against issuing any variance. I'm also a founding member of the Rossmoyn-Bellhurst Zoning Committee, who is vehemently against issuing any variance. So for, I think it's a total misrepresentation that everybody just spoke about they wanted the design of the house. There's far more here than the design of the house. It's a little Spanish house, and it should be kept that way. We are going through a process now where we're having historical districting, and we want to keep our homes in, as is historic. Now, I've lived in the community for 40 years, and so I'm just saying now that I'm speaking on their behalf for privacy and for continuity in the neighborhood. We have a couple of houses in the neighborhood that are actually, before El Tivar, totally shameful, totally shameful. We want to stop that. And so that's all I have to say on behalf of this particular neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Welling. Our next speaker card is Loretta Chicoine.
I yield my time to Carol, because I can't talk for, I get to...
And do you have some prepared remarks for her?
Yes, I do.
All right. However, so for the record, Loretta, is it Chicoine?
Chicoine.
Chicoine, and all right, Ms. Welling, you can share her remarks.
It's Carol Welling again. And let me just say that, for some reasons, some people are very shy about speaking up. They have these strong feelings, and they want to support. They want to support the city in denying this variance. And Loretta is another founding member of the Rossmoyn Mountain Homeowners Association. She's also another member of the Rossmoyn-Bellhurst Zoning Committee. We stand in total op -- she stands in total opposition to this particular project. I think my remarks are applicable to her. I think that the city knows that this particular homeowner has not met the test for securing a variance. And I want to say also that there's going to be a speaker here who will put me to shame, I'm sure. But when Lori Collins speaks, her letter is so outstanding on why this variance should be denied. So I think that's enough, that it's on record that Loretta and her husband, a police officer of 37 years, opposes this project. It's not for our neighborhood. We don't want another El Tivar. And I think we all remember El Tivar. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before I make you sit down, Ms. Welling, is there any other card I'm about to read that they wanted to have you speak for?
Yes.
Well, I guess I'll make you come back up in a moment. Ms. Ramirez.
Where is she? She's not here.
She's not even here?
No, she's had surgery.
She's out of town.
Okay. That, I think that's off procedure for you to talk to somebody that's not even here.
Well, she gave me her letter to read.
We have a copy of the letter.
Do we have a copy of Lila's letter?
From Lila.
Okay. You think that's sufficient?
Oh, it's part of the record, and we have read it.
Well, I, we're very concerned about this particular project, so I would rather be belt and suspenders if you think it's sufficient, and it is in the record, that Lila Ramirez is another founding member of our organization on both levels, and we're totally opposed to it.
Procedurally, we can't just have people, writing people's names down if they're not in the audience.
Well, I think it's along those lines, the signatures that have been presented by the applicant, I hope that someone verifies them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Susan Roberts. Susan Roberts.
My name is Susan Roberts. I live in the Rosmoine area, the Bellhurst tract, and I believe that the denial of these variances should be upheld. The applicant hasn't met any of the four findings. Granting the variances would be a dangerous precedent because no practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships are on this property. There's no exceptional circumstances or condition, conditions that are different from any other property in the area. The granting of the variances would be detrimental to the surrounding properties. What really concerns me is the floor, floor area ratio. It's just massing on a small lot, as opposed to the size of the building. And these variances would be contrary to the objective of the ordinance, which is to keep the floor area ratio in proper proportion to the lot size. And that concludes my rational portion of the discussion. The other thing I would like to say is that when our family outgrew our home, we moved to a larger home. There's no better time than now to be looking for larger homes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker card is Froni Sander. Is she in the audience?
No, she's home-
Then I'm not going to allow you to speak. She's not here.
Well, I have her, I have-
You are not allowed to speak for somebody if they're not in the audience.
Okay. We have her documents.
We have her-
But we have her, we have a letter from-
Do you have the latest one that says, "For the record, I want to submit my protest to the variance"?
Yes, we got that.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, though.
And let me just sidebar. We have communications emails that we have received from Elvart, from Keith Wenger, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, and from, well, a letter from Lori Collins, who's actually here to be able to speak. Did I miss any other letters that are part of the record?
Yes, hers has an attached petition that's Carrie.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Should be attached to one of the emails.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Kretzky.
Kretzky. All right, thank you. All right, well, the only other speaker card I have then is Lori Collins. There's a lot of pressure on you, you know, from, from, you know.
Good afternoon, commissioners of the commission. In preparation for this hearing, I found two court of appeal cases that support the planning, hearing officers' decision to deny the applicant's two variance requests. I've read the application, and the applicant has not met his burden of proving a hardship. His stated hardship is that the existing condition of the site and layout of the building will not allow the owner of the property to develop the site to meet its family needs. Family needs do not constitute a hardship. I found a case from 1960 that arose out of a variance application in the city of San Marino, where the California Court of Appeal affirmed the city's denial of a variance application filed by a church. The church had acquired some R1 property and wanted to put in a parking lot, and was actually parking on it and using it illegally. The court held that the hardship alleged by the church is a result not of external circumstances, but the defendant's own expansion program, and that's the case here. Self-induced hardship is not within the purview of the ordinance. The court of appeal in a 2004 decision overturning a variance approved by the city of Los Angeles held that if the property can be put to effective use, consistent with existing zoning, without a deviation sought, is not significant that the variance would make the applicant's property more valuable, or, as in this case, better suit family needs. The purpose of the variance is to assure that no property, because of special circumstances applicable to it, shall be deprived of privileges commonly enjoyed by the other properties in the same zone and vicinity. As stated in the staff report, the subject property is similar in size, shape, and lot size, and floor plan to other houses and properties located in the neighborhood. Decision does not indicate that the property is being deprived of privileges commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same zone. The applicant is required to provide evidence to sustain four findings. He has made, he has not made a viable case for three of the four findings, and requests that the commission base his decision on neighbor support of the project. I agree that public comment is evidence that the hearing officer and the commission should weigh when considering whether or not to grant a variance, which will materially, will not be materially detrimental to public welfare or injures to public property. But as staff has stated in its staff report, public comment is not a referendum on amending the applicable ordinances, which is what the applicant is essentially arguing. What they're arguing is that public comment governs this case, not the three other factors. My residence is located in the Bellhurst tract, and I'm concerned that the precedent set with granting these two variants would be detrimental to my home. I believe that granting the two variants would be detrimental to our neighborhood, both in terms of aesthetics and impacts on safety and light and air and ability to maintain the structures. If you think about extending this setback problem up to a second floor, think, how could the fire department get in? How do you paint the house? How does the neighbor maintain their house? It's a serious detriment to the neighbor. So, I, do you have a few more minutes?
Well, I don't know about a few, but I'll let you-
One more minute?
-continue for a minute or so, of course.
Okay. There's one case that I found, I think is very instrumental, and I suggest that you, as commissioners, read it. It's a stolen case, it's from 2004, and it basically says that the interest of parties in preventing unjustified variances for neighboring land, it says, "If the interest of parties preventing unjustified variances for neighboring land is not sufficiently protected, the consequences will be a subversion of the critical reciprocity upon which a zoning regulation rests." They're basically saying zoning is a contract between the neighbors. And when I bought my house, I agreed to use it for purposes within the zoning ordinance, and I expect my neighbors to do the same thing. And if we can't rely on that contract between neighbors, it really subverts the purpose of the ordinance, unless you can really make a finding that, for some reason, this particular property doesn't have the, doesn't have the benefits that its neighboring properties would have. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. All right, I don't have any other speaker cards.
I had, you didn't call on me.
Did I go right past?
No.
You missed.
She was the first one, wasn't she?
I'll be brief.
That's fine, Ms. Welling. That's funny.
I just wanted to speak on my own behalf, that I support the city in its denial of the variance, and I support Lori Collins and her excellent presentation to you. I hope you take it under advisement, and I wish to thank you all for your patience.
Thank you, Ms. Welling. All right, I have no further speaker cards. So, the appellant has a rebuttal period, sir?
We do respect, none of the speakers, they mentioned their property addresses. I would like to know if they have, they live within the vicinity of 200 feet or-
Their cards are a matter of, excuse me, a public record. You can review those after the hearing if you'd like.
Okay. There was a comment made by Mrs. Collins regarding people purchasing their property and obeying by the zoning laws. You have to make a consideration that the people buying the property and knowing city of Glendale, they keep changing the zoning status of the properties. So, there are certain things that keeps changing on the zoning. For example, the floor area ratios or the zoning, as far as like floor area ratios and things like that. Within the neighborhood, actually, next to that project site, the property, or one of the opposing people on this project, she has a 47 point, I believe, 46.7% floor area ratio. So, when they say that as far as the safety and as far as the, as far as the privacy, the second floor that we're adding, we're not, we're maintaining six feet setback at the second level. The only thing that we're maintaining at the first floor is three foot eight inch. So, I would like you to consider the fact that the second floor being added on the, on this project is maintaining the six-foot setback. The only thing what we're trying to do is just, we want to maintain the existing first floor, which is setback three foot eight inches at the first floor level. It's only at one side of the project, it's not the other side. The other side has roughly about nine feet of a setback, close to 11 feet. But I don't think that they understood that we're not trying to maintain the second floor to be three foot eight inches all the way up. The minimum setback on the second floor is six feet. Basically, these are the comments that I have about this project. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
All right, any questions from the commission?
I have a question. You've addressed what you think is the setback issue only, and yet you also exceed the floor area ratio, and you haven't addressed it.
As far as the floor area ratio? The floor area ratio, it's a small lot, and there's not that much. My client needs three bedrooms and needs to have these requirements. It's just basically, if you take a look at the floor plan, it's not a big house, it's not El Tivar that's being indicated. It's roughly about 2,800 or 900 square feet altogether. It's not a huge house nowadays. It's a small lot, I understand that, but this is what we could do on this lot. We cannot come forward, or we cannot go expand on the first floor level because we don't have that much of a space. And basically, if you take, take the bathrooms or the staircase out, it's just roughly 2,800 or 900 square feet. One thing that you should also consider, that I would like to bring it to your attention, is that when zoning calculates the floor area, they go from outside of the wall. When building department calculates the area, it's from the interior wall. So, if you compare this project, if you calculate it from interior of the walls, you have maybe 200, 300 square feet less. Now, based on accounting records that we gather over here, those are based on a building requirement. So, the square footages of the projects being recorded in the county, it's based on interior floor areas rather than the exterior floor areas.
We could change that and you could pay more property tax.
I understand that. It's not a thing, but this is the situation that we have because we're basing our analysis on the floor area definition.
And we're, and we're also comparing every house the same way, so it's not a standalone comparison. So, the square footage of your house is from the outside, and the square footage of the other houses is on the outside, so it's all the same.
No, I don't think so, because the square footage of the other houses, this is the only city of Glendale, city of LA or city of-
I mean, in the neighborhood.
In the neighborhood.
I don't live anywhere else.
No, I understand that, but in the neighborhood, we're getting the information from the LA County Assessors Office. The County Assessors Office information is, is based on a building code, not the zoning code.
But it's constant information. I mean, it's the same information.
It's the same information, but the area is being calculated based on the building code, not the zoning code. Zoning code is different definition. Let's say if the house was built in 1940s, there was no indication as far as the floor area, we calculate the floor area from inside. You calculate it from, I mean, floor area from inside of the building rather than the outside of the building.
I think that's incidental to the discussion.
Any other questions for the appellant?
Yeah, I have a question. When, property purchase?
I believe maybe about nine to 10 years ago.
10 years ago?
Yes, sir.
So, you just had a smaller family back then?
He's a, he's a young guy that he plans to get married, and he hasn't, I mean, he wants to have a family, so that's what he's doing right now. He's about 36, 37 years old that he wants, plans to get married, and that's what, that's what he's trying to expand the house on.
Yeah, because he bought, he bought, he bought it, what, how many bedrooms did he already have? And to-
I understand that, but you're talking about, yeah, but you're talking about 10 years ago. I mean, people, life changes and things like that. If you base it on that, I mean, people buy properties usually to live there for five, six years or to expire.
Or they, or they go and buy another property.
Or they go buy another property.
When they, when their family-
Yes, I understand that, but it's situation to situation is different, people-
Years ago and-
Yes, sir.
Now, his family's home.
Yes.
Drinking, drinking too much.
Any other questions for the speaker?
I have a question, but I propose a staff for the speaker. This survey is done by our staff?
No, that was submitted by the applicant.
Applicant?
Today, he gave it to us today.
Okay, and so on, 52% floor area ratio, and on the applicant, 47%?
Yeah, what occurred was, that was the survey that was originally submitted with the original exhibits, where they were proposing 52%. And I believe after the first public hearing, there was a request to continue the case because they were proposing to reduce the floor area ratio. And at the second public hearing, that's where the .47 exhibit came in.
Okay. So, I mean, what, why? Just because this-
Originally, no, 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 you don't, we originally submitted with the 52%, and we had a discussion with the planner, and we had a discussion with the design review staff, and we tried, reduced it down. We had a, I mean, we didn't go to the hearing, we modified the plans, we brought it down to 47%.
Okay.
So, that was the intention on that. So, that on the original submission, the intention was to do a 52% floor area ratio, and we reduced it down to 47%.
So, what are you trying to, because looking at it, it's like, you know, you're comparing.
Well, we're not doing 52%. We modified-
Even 47. And most of the homes are 10%.
I understand that, but based on the lot areas, if you take a look at the lot areas, these are the questions. I mean, this is basically, the lot is a small lot compared to the other lots in the neighborhood. And that's what it's getting the, because you take the floor area-
Well, not necessarily-
According, according to your own survey, it's actually slightly larger than the average.
It, yes.
But you were just saying your lot's smaller.
No, no, what I'm saying is that some of the lots in the area, it's basically, I'm not talking about the 300 or linear feet of this, I'm talking about in general, if you take the, look at the radius of 500 square-
You know, and by the way, I haven't done the math here, but when I go through the columns, and there's only one property less than the average, you only got one property at 5370 square feet, the rest of them all larger, there's no way that that average is right. There is a math problem with that stated average.
Oh.
It's just wrong. And we're not here to argue the math, but it's inaccurate.
But even so, I mean, even, right, I mean, you're showing 30 more than 10, I mean, every family there is having, growing family problems or-
Yes.
You know, issues, and, you know, they're not, and we can't, they're not just proposing for everything like that.
That, that's what I'm trying to tell you, that based on the zoning code, they're taking the floor area from exterior of the walls, that is your floor area definition of the, based on a building code, today's Glendale building code, the building code defines the floor area from interior of the walls. If you take the thickness of the walls, it makes a difference, close to 200 to 300 square feet difference. A lot of this information that we got, it's from County Tax Assessors Office. Those are based on a building code, not a zoning code. I guarantee if I go measure a house, any of these houses, the square footage, if I measure it from outside to outside, it will be much more than this, that is specified in here.
Okay. But this is what you submitted?
This is what the requirement is, this is what the city is asking us to do. So, city is asking us to go through the County Assessors Office, get the information, get the floor area, get the lot area, and divide it, and do this. So, we're basically going through that channel. There's no other way to measure this.
Right, right. And my next question is, there's like three other houses here that are over the maximum floor area ratio?
Yes.
Have those been verified and why they go beyond the floor area?
Well, as noted in the staff report, a board member is saying, there were three- homes that I noted that exceeded the maximum FAR 40%, but again, those homes were constructed prior to the enactment of the floor area ratio requirements, which took place in the early 1990s.
Okay. That's it.
Any other questions for the appellant? See none, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Closing remarks from staff?
Yes, Commissioner, I just wanted to briefly go over the findings that are delineated in the staff report, and just to highlight some of them, although some of the speakers have already echoed what I've stated. Again, it's the intent of the code, again, to eliminate non-conforming aspects of the older residential buildings, when significant portions of the building are removed. So, as stated earlier, neither the width nor the area of the lot is out of scale with the other lots in the R1 zone, or the immediate neighborhood. The applicant's request for both variances are self-imposed hardships. The lot size of 1,375 square feet has an FAR of 24%, which is in keeping with the existing average. With the addition, it would increase to 2,665.50 square feet, again, creating a .47 FAR, which again, is a self-imposed hardship. It is increasing the allowed floor area ratio by 415.50 square feet. The property, the proposed floor area ratio of FAR, again, is, the, excuse me, the objectives of the floor area ratio standards is to limit the overall bulk of the house, and to keep it in proportion to the given lot size. The objective of the five-foot interior setback, again, similarly, is to provide and maintain reasonable separation between homes with certain height in the R1 zone. By extending the existing non-conforming three-foot-eight-inch interior setback would intensify the existing conditions, and would be contrary to the objectives of the ordinance and the general plan. And I'd like to just bring up, since I know that the applicant stated that they are setting back the second floor, however, the way the zoning code is written in the law, that if you increase, it's, the interior setback is based on your height, the height of the building. So if the height of the building is between 20 and 30 feet, you are required to have a five-foot interior setback. It doesn't say that only the first floor needs to be setback, or only the second floor needs to setback. It's the entire building. So I just wanted to make that clear. In terms of the strict application of the provisions of the ordinance, it would not, would not result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship. Again, there are other options that could be explored, that would not warrant the need for multiple variance requests. An example that was noted in the staff report is for, is the three-foot, three-foot-eight-inch interior setback along the north side of the property, which is less than 100 square feet, which could potentially be reasonably accommodated, perhaps at the rear of the house. Again, staff is not here to design it, it's just, just to give an example of how there are other options out there that could be explored. And also, the size of the addition, of course, could be reduced, in order to avoid the need for a variance, which again, is a self-imposed hardship. Granting of the variance would be materially detrimental to the public welfare and juries to the property or improvements in such a zone or neighborhood, in that the adjacent properties would not be protected by the high standards of the code with regard to residential development. The proposed FAR 47% and the interior setback proposed at three-foot-eight inches would not be in character with the majority of the developments in the area. And if approved, it is expected that this case could lead to further variance requests of similar nature on other properties in the area. And finally, granting of the variance would be contrary to the objectives of the ordinance, in that the house would be allowed to become more non-conforming in terms of interior setback, and the proposed floor area ratio would create a non-conformity where none existed before, and more mass in relationship to the lot size. And that's how I prefaced my comments earlier. Similarly, the objective of the five-foot interior setback requirement is to provide and maintain reasonable separation between the homes with certain heights in the R1 zone, thereby enabling more privacy, more protection from noise, and access to light and air movement. And for those reasons, staff is recommending that the planning commission sustain the planning hearing officer's decision to deny the variance requests. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from the commission for staff? Mr. Sheets?
I've got a quick question. During the testimony, it was stated by the appellant that he did submit calc's to you. Did he do so?
Which calc's?
Any calc's, any current calc's.
Only calc's that staff has received was the one that I, again, pinned up on the board. That, they actually submitted two. One, I believe, was on September 14th, and I have it in the file, because I did date stamp it. And then the second one is the most recent, which would be September 29th.
So were they...
Again, the information, which is kind of similar, I briefly reviewed the one that was just submitted. The length and the heights of the walls have not been noted. Sure, staff could dimension the elevations, but the burden of proof is on the applicant. It's the applicant's responsibility to provide staff with that information. And lastly, I believe I saw something, because I, it's somewhat a little different than what I have, in terms of the roof area, that is, according to the diagram, there's a note, if I'm not mistaken, that states that the existing roof will remain, and it's being, what does it say? They're going to build up the roof. If the existing roof framing is going to remain, that may actually be considered abandoned in place, which again, in essence, means demolition, from a zoning standpoint.
Thank you.
So, to answer your first question, no, I have not received anything that what's already pinned up on the board.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? See none, we'll close the public hearing, go to deliberations. Who'd like to begin? Mr. Lee?
One of the things the appellant contends here, when he, by for the appeal here, is that he had new evidences, and that the planning hearing officer did not have all the necessary information for to make the decision. And I tried very hard to look for the information that the appellant was submitting as a new evidence, and I'm sorry, but I didn't find any. And I think planning officer, hearing officer had all the necessary information to make the, make the decision. And the findings, findings that she, she made is, is correct, and I support her findings. And although we're sensitive to public comments and public sentiments, in this case, I hear more of the objections than the support, that, you know, really does not come into the, to the play, as far as when you have this grossly affected FARs and setback requirements here. So I support to sustain the decision.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Mr. Sheets?
Where do I start? First, I'll start out by saying that I think the, all the findings are self-imposed. So that gives you an idea where I'm going, but I have, I have some real problems with the fact that if I look at the chronology on all of our data, there were six attempts, for lack of a better term, to work with the appellant, to work with the homeowner and his, his representative, to clearly define the requirements for this process. And every successive attempt seemed to end up with not understanding, or not having a clear understanding of what those requests were. And then tonight, what I was hearing from the appellant's representative was thoughts about what should be done, or statements about what was given to the city and what wasn't given to the city, all of which was pretty, pretty clearly defined in the package, that either they did not have the right information, it wasn't current, or it wasn't clear, but once or twice, I can understand, but after six or seven times, tonight would be the seventh time, if you come and say you submitted current calculations, and then you hand the calculations to the staff person tonight, and tell them that they should make calculations, it doesn't work. There's, I, I can't believe these drawings that we have, because I don't know if they're current or not. I can't believe the calc's, I don't know if they're current or clear. I don't know if they relate to the drawing. Any new information that was referenced in this current appeal is not forthcoming, I don't see it. And it, my sense is that the, the appellant's representative is just making unilateral decisions, that what, you understand what's wrong, I've told you what my understanding is, and I've answered your question, but that, there's no decision. No, no information was forthcoming, no facts were forthcoming. Why didn't this happen in one of the five or six other attempts to respond to the staff? Give current plans, give current calculations, ask any questions, and then do it? I haven't seen that happen yet, and that, that troubles me. I have another, one problem with, tonight, we receive a list of names. And I don't know when this occurred, or where you got these names, it's neighbors referenced, but I don't, it comes tonight. Is, did you just get this information? And I saw a similar list that were against the proposal, but there were follow-up memos and emails and letters that kind of supported that, so I saw some semblance of order to the whole process. So at this point in time, as I stated earlier, I think, I think that it's all self-imposed. I can't make any of the findings. If I tried, it'd be a stretch to make one of them, and that's where I stand right now.
Thank you, Mr. Sheets.
I find, I also find it hard to justify making any of the findings, and it would be difficult to support overturning the decision already made.
I, I agree with my fellow commissioners. I think that we have a situation here in which the applicant doesn't understand what the meaning and the intention of the zoning code is, and has chosen to design despite those guidelines. And the, the intention of those variances and those setbacks are specifically the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood, and the context of the neighborhood seems to be ignored, and the repeated responses that the applicant, or the applicant's architect has presented. And to continue and intensify a non-conforming issue, and to justify it by expanding families, which we would hope that most of the families that are in Glendale are expanding, and that they are finding other homes here, and I do agree with one of the speakers, that it's prime time to look for a new place, there's a lot of homes out there. To me, it does not seem, it seems disingenuous. And I have looked at this and listened, and I cannot find any reason, or any piece of paper that the applicant has given me, that gives me reason to overturn the hearing officer's decision, and I will vote to support it.
Make a quick statement.
Sure.
In going through this process, and preparing for the meeting, and now listening to the testimony, it's come to mind that I'm sensing there seems to be a mentality in the city to try to beat the zoning codes. And I don't think that's what they're about. I think what the zoning codes are about is, we kind of want to stay like this, that's the way the city is planned to be developed, unless you have an extremely unusual circumstance, which we'll talk to you about. That's what, that's what the plan is made for, that's what this process is made for. But I have a real problem with continuing to see attempts to try to beat, to try to outthink, to try to unilaterally decide that that code is not good, that code is not adequate. That's not the way the process works. And as was stated earlier, the, the FAR is changing, and the codes are changing, they do change periodically, but it's not a quick process. They don't change every week, they don't change every month, so, anyway. I just, if nothing else that we learned from this, from this hearing, I think that's, that mentality has to stop, so, thank you. I'll put my soapbox away.
You know what? This is an easy one. It's, it's not even close. It's too big, there's nothing right about it. The applicants, and now the appellant's actions are just woefully inadequate. I mean, we're here to make findings. The findings that were prepared by the zoning hearing officer are persuasive, they're complete, I fully agree with them. The appellant comes in, throws, in what appears to be a continuous mode of behavior, throws some information at us, that, you know, literally, actually, after the hearing started, came in, threw a bunch of stuff out here, doesn't address, doesn't even talk about the findings, you know, to any great extent. It's a no-brainer. It's the wrong project in the wrong place, and it's going to be that way for years to come, certainly from my perspective. Any other comments? Otherwise, I'd like to have a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
If I can find it. I move that upon review and consideration of all materials and exhibits of current record relative to variance case number PVAR 2010-002, located at 1304 Carmen Drive, and after having conducted an appeal hearing on said matter, that the planning commission hereby sustain the planning hearing officer's decision, and deny said variance case number PVAR 2010-002, in accord with the findings set forth in the decision letter of October 28, 2010.
Second.
Motion support call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. On a vote of five to zero, variance case PVAR 2010-002, the planning commission has sustained the planning hearing officer's decision to deny. Under the provisions of Chapter 2.88 of the Glendale Municipal Code, any individual not satisfied with the commission's decision may file an appeal to the city council. This is done by filing a notice of appeal, along with a filing fee, at the Building Safety Division Permit Services Center, located at 633 East Broadway, Room 101, Glendale, California. Any appeal must be filed within 15 days, following the actual date of such decision. And we will move on to new business, tentative tract 71487. It's located at 624 and 630 Geneva Street. The subdivider slash owner is San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity, located on Irwindale Avenue in Azusa. The proposal is a request to develop a new five-unit residential condominium project on approximately 10,273 square foot lot, located within, in the R1250 high-density residential zone. The recommendation is that planning, the recommendation is that the planning commission approve tentative tract 71487, approve subject to compliance with the State Subdivision Map Act, Chapters 16.28 and 16.16 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the recommended conditions. Well, it doesn't appear that Mr. Kraus is here.
Uh-huh. Thank you, Mr. Kane, members of the commission.
I was thinking of, actually, Wolfgang, when I was thinking... I was thinking of, actually, Wolfgang when I was thinking.
Ah, yeah.
Sorry, Eric.
Different Kraus.
Yes, it is. Sorry, Eric.
No relation. Okay, the case today before you is tentative tract map. As a number, was it, I have the number in front of me right now. 71487. It's located at 624 Geneva Street. The applicant is the San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity. The general plan designation is high-density residential. The zoning is R1250 high-density residential. The applicant is requesting approval of a tentative tract map to develop a new two-story, five-unit affordable residential condominium project on approximately 10,273 square foot lot. Each unit includes an attached two-car garage with direct access to each unit. All five units include three bedrooms, a range in size between 1,191 square feet to 1,367 square feet. The applicant received approval of three variances from the planning hearing officer on April 1st, 2010. That included allow the construction of a five-unit residential project where cars from one of the five units will back onto the local street. If you look at the plans, the development plans, there's actually two driveways for the project. They're both on the south end of the property. One goes directly into a two-car garage which faces on Geneva, and the other one would access the other four garages further in on the site. Parking at the ground level within two-car garages and not within subterranean parking was also a variance that was approved. Projects that have five or more units are required of subterranean parking. In this case, they were doing individual two-car garages. The other variance approval is for, to provide approximately 817 square feet of common open space where the code requires 1,000 square feet. All of the zoning regulations the project does comply with. Because the project is an affordable housing project, it qualified and received approval of a parking concession provided under the government code section 65915 and chapter 3036 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and that's SB 1818 regulations. So, there, under the parking concession, there were required to provide 10 parking spaces, which amounts to two parking spaces per unit. And that ratio under the code also includes handicapped and guest parking included within the 10 parking spaces. The project also was approved at the design, excuse me, design review board on July 8th, 2010. And right now, there's a recommended condition on your motion, condition number nine, that would require that the applicant get a easement recorded along the northern part of the property line. That was to allow access from the other property, which is still currently owned by the housing authority, so they can gain access to the front doors of the units that face to the north. So, they actually have gotten that easement recorded already with the county, so they've complied with that condition. The project was determined exempt under the California Environmental Quality Act. At this time, staff recommends that tentative tract map number 71487 be approved, subject to compliance with State Subdivision Map Act, chapters 1632 and 1616 of Title 16 of Glendale Municipal Code and the recommended conditions. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Sure. If you go back to the statement about the parking with the handicapped and...
Yeah, yeah. Under SB 1818, which is, and Eric, as we have, it's affordable housing ordinance, so it was adopted that mirrors SB 1818. And because they're providing affordable housing, the parking ratios are different than the normal code. So, for three-bedroom units, they're only required to park two per unit. And then whatever ratios that are included as part of SB 1818 include guests and handicaps. You don't have to provide additional spaces to meet handicap requirements or guest parking. Those are inclusive of the two parking spaces per unit.
So, they're in compliance?
Correct.
Why was a parking concession spoken about?
Well, that's because they don't meet the standard code for parking, but they do meet it for affordable housing projects, which is what this one is.
That was my question, too.
All right. I don't have any speaker cards, so unless there's something more from staff or questions from the commission. You have no intention to speak, you're just here in case there's a question, all right? All right. So, unless the commission has specific questions for the applicant, I suggest we just move to deliberations and/or a motion.
I'm ready to move. I'd like to move that upon consideration of tentative tract number 71487, and after reviewing the records, files, reports, and all documentary evidence submitted with regard to said tentative tract, that tentative tract number 71487 is hereby approved, subject to the compliance, to compliance with State Subdivision Map Act, chapter 16 dot 16 and 16 dot 32 of Title 16 of the Glendale Municipal Code, Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code, and the 45 additional conditions listed below. And the planning commission hereby makes each and all of the following findings a fact, which are stated in the motion. Second.
Motion to support call roll, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. On a vote of five to zero, the planning commission has approved tentative tract number Moving on to planning division updates.
Yes, we just have an update that before we were looking at having a joint transportation, parking commission, planning commission meeting on March 28th, and that's been canceled. So, let you have the calendar. And then, last night, council did adopt the downtown specific plan amendments.
They did?
They did adopt that.
Excellent.
Good.
And that's all I have for announcements.
All right. Comments from commissioners?
Get a quick one.
Sure, Mr. Sheets.
I'd like to reiterate, I've stated before, the process for the North Glendale area, the advisory committee, the advisory team continues to work after, I don't know how many months now, over a year possibly, to put together input from the community up there, businesses and community members, neighborhood representatives, the kind of things that should go into place about zoning, the ideas that they have about what should happen, what could happen, and how that might occur. And my point in bringing it up is, there are a lot of citizens up there that are showing up late at night and staying late hours, which is good and is common for our city. And another thing that's common, but I greatly appreciate, and I think it represents what type of people we have in the city, every one of these meetings, and I've been to other ones for other committees, the planning staff shows up en masse, thoroughly prepared, documentation, facilitates the meeting in a very professional way. And I just, it just came to light recently in the last meeting that I appreciate that, I know the city appreciates that, and I just want to give you guys a job well done for that process. And I hope to see it soon, going to the council. Thank you very much.
Any other comments from commissioners? Searching for a motion to adjourn?
Move, so move.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, thank you.